Because we have a lot to talk about. What I'm going to do is just welcome you, which I did. And we'll have our roll call and then public comment. And then we're going to have a workshop, which is, this is really, for a policy wonk like me, I love it. This is going to be fun. So Lori, you want to come up and give the roll call of all the boards, design boards and commissions? Here we go.
Councilmember Barnwell? Horton? House? Schneider? Williams? Mayor Bloom? Planning Commissioner Bartlet? Jossis? Larson? Myers? Thompson? White? Chair Jacobs? Historic Landmarks Commissioner Adams? Boucher? Curtis? Hawes? Murray? Naylor? Pujo? Sharp? Chair Lavoy? Architectural Board of Review Member Orrell? Blakely? Manson-Hing? Mosel? Mudge? Sherry? Zeke? Chair Winkie?
Thank you. Well, thank you. And we're here for this joint workshop. And we have public comment on items not on the agenda. And I see some members of the public. Anybody want to share something this morning? Like I just ate a doughnut or something? No? Okay. Okay. Then we can go to the workshop itself. And I'm going to turn this over to Betty Hennan. Betty Wees, sorry. She had another name once. There you go.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Betty Wees, the City Planner. And I too want to welcome you all here and just provide a few preliminary comments before we get started today. This special workshop is in response to quite a bit of interest on the part of the community at large, as well as the Council, Planning Commission, Historic Landmarks Commission and ABR, in reviewing projects today in our current policy framework, while at the same time, we're undergoing a comprehensive review of the city's policies related to growth and community character, known as our process known as Plan Santa Barbara. So issues about building height, design and community character are extremely important, clearly. And we all know that. And we all know that's why we're here today. Again, the council requested that an action be taken in response to the community concerns that they share as well, as discussed at their May 8 meeting just a few months ago. So the outcome of that initial discussion at council was to hold this special joint meeting. And we have designed it in a workshop format to allow for maximum opportunity for discussion amongst the board and commissions and the city council. This is really a rare opportunity, and we want to, again, maximize the possible benefit of your dialogue. There will be no formal action today, but as I review the agenda with you, you'll see how the dialogue will continue and be reported out. Again, this is a public meeting, and we're very happy to see members of the public here who, again, a lot of concern about building height and character, is we've been hearing about that in our public Plan Santa Barbara workshops. And again, let me review the agenda with you today, so we'll all understand how everyone will have an opportunity to speak. So on the agenda, we're doing a brief staff presentation, and then we will break into four roundtable small group discussions. The way we'd like to shape the roundtable discussion is with a mix of members of Council, ABR, HLC and Planning Commission. So our suggestion, in rough numbers, is two members of each body would sit at one of the four tables. And staff through this presentation, we're going to just quickly cover policy context that we're working in and some of the key questions that we think will help lead your roundtable discussion. So there'll be a small group discussion, approximately an hour and 15 minutes. And, wait, 10:30, yeah, about an hour and 15 minutes. And then after the roundtable discussion, we're going to have report outs from each of the four roundtable discussions. And at that point, then, we'll hold a public comment on the topic of the day. We thought that that order of business might be the best, so that the public can also take in the staff presentation and hear the report outs from the small groups, so they get an idea of where the council and boards and commissions are going with their thoughts. Then we'll briefly wrap up with, direction is expected that the staff will return to the city council for action. Again, this is a work session, workshop environment, so no specific action's going to be taken today. We'd like to return to the council in a short period after this, so we can follow up on the work session. Okay. Just a few more comments from me before I turn the podium over. I wanted to comment that, again, this is part of Plan Santa Barbara. If any of you were at the May 8 meeting at council, you heard several people saying issues about community design are very big, and they need to be in the forefront of the Plan Santa Barbara discussion. So we are in effect there. And I just want to briefly tell you about the amount of public dialogue we've had in our four workshops and grassroots outreach efforts. So we've had comment cards on that wonderful flyer we sent out. There's a comment card in both Spanish and English opportunity. We've received 400 comment cards. We are very active on our website. We get about 86 visits a day on the YouPlanSantaBarbara.org. We've held about 30 grassroots meetings, and about 260 people attended the four workshops. And I was fortunate enough to attend all four and hear quite a bit of discussion. And people are talking in the community about community design, size, bulk and scale and building height, absolutely. So this is a great opportunity for you all to comment as well. So the comments range from people who are very concerned, are okay with some of the new development, but don't want to necessarily see a lot of change. And there are some that are really questioning, what is the growth future for this community? And can something like no growth actually be an option? And they want serious dialogue on those issues. Other people are talking about more density, and they think it makes sense in the city of Santa Barbara, and particularly in the downtown or certain areas of the city. And a lot of people are making a connection between density and transportation issues like transit. So what we're moving into in the Plan Santa Barbara process is round two. And briefly, what we expect could be coming out of the round two workshops will be a reaffirmation of the city policies. Again, today, you'll be hearing a quick review of some major existing city policy, building on our prior general plan update, the circulation element, the housing element, the urban design guidelines. So we think there's quite a bit of value in continuing from a point of looking at our existing policy foundation. Also, we expect that there should be dialogue. Should we adjust these policies or look at changing our direction in some way? Again, some of those key policy issues are related to housing, commercial growth, known as Measure E, and then I mentioned transportation as well. So what do we think will come from today? Right off the top, we think this, again, is just a great opportunity for you all to get together, and we expect some immediate benefits from gaining a common understanding of the policy framework and how we all work together in an important development review process. We will be looking at, we expect some of your discussion to focus on findings, and what is the policy direction to support actions based on findings. And those actions can include approval, approval with conditions and revised projects, and also denial. We expect that from this great dialogue, it may emerge that certain near-term actions would be beneficial. Again, in a process that we're all undergoing right now, where we're actively working on current development projects, while we're moving possibly in new directions for the future. It makes it difficult, and maybe some near-term adjustments would be helpful. And then, again, overall, the benefit of this discussion to the comprehensive community dialogue for Plan Santa Barbara, we think, will be evident in your report outs and your discussion. So that concludes my introduction. I'm going to turn the mic over to Liz Limon. And then when she's finished with the staff presentation, we would ask that the members of the boards and commissions go and find seats at the roundtables. I just want to explain a moment for another logistical thing. This is to maximize their discussion. What we recommend that the general public do, which often happens in workshop settings, is we want to make sure that the people at the table are comfortable, they can all see and hear each other. And then those of us that would be observing, stand back just a little bit from the table, and you can listen in or walk around. It is about an hour and a half. But each small group will be reporting out here on the microphone. So we will get to hear a good summary of each small group discussion. And this is also being taped for later replay and loading onto our website as well. So anyway, there will be just a few little logistic things to work out at the end of the staff presentation. And here's Liz Limon. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. This is quite a group. And I've been tasked with reviewing the policy history and providing the policy context for your conversation today. And usually, it takes me about 45 minutes to go through this type of thing, and I think I have about 10 now. So forgive me if I skip over really quickly. But history is very important, and policy history is really important, especially in the city of Santa Barbara. And this policy context is important for how we are reviewing projects in the development review process today. And it's also really important to know how we got to where we are, based on the previous general plan update that happened in the 1980s. The city's current land development policy framework is a result, really, of decades of community involvement, consensus building, and critical and timely decision-making by the residents of Santa Barbara and the city council. We have a website for this workshop today that I hope many of you were able to look at. If not, it's still there. The history of our land use, transportation and housing policies really is very well outlined in the city's housing element. And there's also a slideshow that's on the website that you can pretty easily flip through, that I'm doing a very concise review of it here today. And these other documents are all available on the website and provide this important context. In the late 1980s, many of you know we're here and participated in the previous general plan update. It resulted, it was a community-wide effort, very similar to what we're doing now with Plan Santa Barbara. And it was a discussion and dialogue about future growth. The result was an amendment to our land use element in 1990 that incorporated Measure E, which is the commercial growth limit that we've had since 1990 that expires in 2010. And it also addressed the consequences of a limited growth future, namely, it laid out very important housing policies to encourage residential development and circulation element, called for a circulation element update. And for the last 15 or so years, the city has steadily been following through on the direction from the community, from the previous 1990 decisions that were made. And these included our housing element update, which we've actually done twice, to encourage multifamily and mixed-use development in and around downtown and other commercial corridors in the city. And we've updated the circulation element to encourage a balanced transportation system in the city, and also to encourage people to live near where they work and to walk and bike in compact development. I think it's really important to know, when we were implementing these strategies from the previous general plan update in the mid-1990s, there really was a recession on the South Coast, and there was very little residential development happening in the city. And I think the assumptions that went into the policy changes that have been happening over the last 15 years are really important to revisit and to know, as far as the policy context. And so in the 1990s, our housing element was amended to really encourage multifamily and mixed-use development downtown. The idea was that these units would provide housing opportunities for downtown workers, entry-level ownership, and also empty nesters, moving out from single-family homes, retirees wanting to be downtown near the cultural and retail and entertainment activities. We also felt that higher densities and more units would spread the land and development costs, resulting in the market providing non-subsidized affordable housing for the people. I see some smiles. 15 years later, the housing market in California and Santa Barbara has really called into question a lot of these assumptions. Also, in the mid-1990s, the assumptions that led to these policy changes was that compact development downtown would result in less of a need to own, park and drive multiple cars per household, thus reducing the dependence on the automobile and reducing traffic congestion in and around downtown. All these assumptions that went into the policy changes over the last 15 years are still really at the forefront of where the planning profession is going with concepts of smart growth, reducing energy dependence, avoiding sprawl and encouraging infill development and green building techniques. And the documents that are provided on the website, the urban design guidelines, take the circulation element and the housing element strategies one step further. And it actually, the urban design guidelines were called for by the Architectural Board of Review, said, hey, this new direction is great, but we need urban design guidelines to help us make buildings in the downtown more pedestrian-friendly and to make sure that the infrastructure is implementing the housing and circulation element policies. And the urban design guidelines, I really hope people take a look at it, because it's an amazing document that was developed by members of the ABR, HLC, Planning Commission and city council at the time, in 1998. And I hadn't read them in a while, and in preparing for this, I went back and looked through. And it really has a lot of great information and direction about how new development needs to be compatible with the existing downtown framework and how they should interrelate. So I strongly encourage people to review at least the first couple chapters of that. So in addition to this policy context, and we also had on the website, the views report that was called for by the public at the conclusion of our Condition Trends and Issues report. The late Claudia Madison really hammered on us and said, you need to consider views as an important resource when you're looking at new development in and around downtown. So that view report has a complete policy compendium of all the direction in the city. And actually, as the Planning Commission reviewed that report, one of the questions we asked was, what's missing? Do we need more tools? Do we have the policy framework in order to protect views as we're reviewing development? And the Planning Commission actually felt that we do have the right tools, and we just need to make sure we're using the EPV guidelines, the urban design guidelines and the views policies that we have on the books. And also, this whole planning, this whole policy context is really important for our Plan Santa Barbara discussions. And then, in addition to all these policy contexts and design guidelines, we have very specific zoning standards and requirements also. And many of these standards were revised over the last 15 years to try to accomplish our policy objectives, which was to encourage mixed-use development downtown and in commercial areas. And we've been quite successful. The market has helped a great deal. And actually, I meant to mention that someone attended today and handed out an excerpt from the downtown waterfront visioning process. And in our previous slide, the downtown waterfront visioning direction is in the views after report as an attachment, and is also an attachment for the urban design guidelines. That process informed both those documents. And so that was very helpful that they brought an excerpt of that. It is also on the website, and that process informed both those documents. One of the most important zoning changes that happened over the last 15 years was allowing variable density standards to apply in our commercial zones. And that was done in 1992. And that has been probably one of the key factors, in addition to changing setbacks and parking standards and open space for the increased development activity we're seeing downtown. So we have all these policies, guidelines, zoning, and we also have state and local findings, that would be, yeah, right here, state and local findings for approval of new development. And again, we just wanted to provide this as context for your discussion. These are existing findings that must be made for every single condominium that's approved in the city, whether it's in the commercial zones or in the neighborhoods. And as you can see, these findings are very broad, and we're hoping our discussion today can talk about how these findings are being made between the boards. One thing that's important to note, though, is we do not have findings for design review approval or for consistency with the urban design guidelines. And I know that's something people have been talking about. So as you know, we're seeing unprecedented residential and mixed-use development downtown and in commercial areas throughout the city. And it's been 17 years since we've taken a comprehensive look at the city's growth and development policies. Plan Santa Barbara is the time and the context to evaluate, affirm, revise or change this policy framework that's been in place since 1990, and actually, for decades before as well, building upon the same community goals that we've had since the 70s. But it's important that we don't take any of these topics in a vacuum. I think this really came out clear when the concern about building heights came up in the discussion at city council. Everybody realized, oh, my gosh, building height is one of the issues, but they're all very much interrelated. And so we just wanted to put up some of the issues and talk about their interrelationships a little bit. But these are very complex and complicated and interrelated. And again, I could spend 45 minutes on this slide, but today is really about all of you. And the boards and commissioners are very well aware of this planning context and also how these issues interrelate. But I think there are sort of emerging potential conflicts between these very strongly held community values about our community character, what are the small-town feel that people love and want to protect, but also how the changes that are happening to our demographic diversity and our economic diversity. Economic diversity, not only as far as the people who are here, but also the businesses that are here. Preservation of historic resources has always been a very strongly held community value. And emerging issues of energy and green building and protecting our environment and water quality, and then the concept of sustainability. What is a sustainable city? What are sustainable city policies? So many of these things always, and the public health issues that people are talking about, and how to be a walkable community that encourages public health, so many of those discussions lead you back to where our policies are today, which is trying to develop, where should the new housing be? And it should be in a compact manner downtown. And so it's difficult to try to address all those issues at once, and I know it's going to be a challenging small group discussion today. And these are the questions we're going to ask you to be talking about. And primarily, the first one is, are we on track? Are we headed in the right direction for Santa Barbara? We're seeing the results of the last 15 years of policy changes, and it's a good time to stop and reevaluate. We're seeing the projects actually be built, and I think it's perfectly fine to question whether we like what we're seeing or what types of changes need to be made. One of our primary focuses of today is to review the existing policies, guidelines and findings for approval of projects. This is sort of the near-term goal. And decide whether they're sufficient or whether we need to make some changes either to our zoning or have additional findings for approval to strengthen that process and give you, the boards and commissioners who are dealing with these issues every week on your agenda, do you need more teeth? Do you need more strength? Do you have adequate direction? So we want to know what's missing. And then after we get through that, the immediate discussion of that, what's happening every week on your agendas, we also want to talk about and get from you some input about what some of the key questions for the Plan Santa Barbara Policy Options Workshop, those emerging issues and policy conflicts. Our next round of public workshops is where we're going to be asking people to really grapple with that and to talk about, are we on right track and heading in the right direction? And it's going to be very difficult. Round one has been fun, because it's getting, we're getting all walks of people. It's been a great outreach and a good learning curve for a lot of people. But it's going to be very hard to look at those issues of housing, open space, transportation, sprawl, infill development, all these things, community character and preservation of historic resources with the community. How can we get them to make the type of growth decisions that were made back in 1990? And so again, I think that's why it's really important to see how the process ended up last time, what direction we got in 1990 and how we followed through with that. And I think that's important to think of as far as Plan Santa Barbara, what's going to be the outcome of that. The key primary questions are Measure E, limited commercial growth from 1990 to 2010. Is there going to be a continuation of Measure E? How effective has it been? And what type of additional commercial development do we want to see in the city? It has to do with our economy, diversity and everything else. And then housing, how much more and where? That really is the two big questions for Plan Santa Barbara. So these are the questions for the small group discussion. And I just want to say that, I guess I did have some concluding remarks. I don't know if I have enough time, but that we really thought that we were doing the right thing, and that many of our assumptions about who was going to live in the multifamily units downtown, whether they worked at all and how they got to work, may no longer be valid in the current economy. But there still are many, many reasons to support compact development in and around downtown and in commercial areas. And these are the types of discussions we want to have today and in Plan Santa Barbara. Reducing the dependence on the car for every single trip and errand. Supporting a vibrant downtown Santa Barbara. Having walkable areas that encourage public health benefits. We have an aging population. Do we want this population to be in outlining areas sprawl, or should they be downtown in a compact area with transit and services nearby? And also, we need incentives for our housing, not our housing, our building stock. We have, we're an old city. We have a lot of very old buildings. Some are historically important and need to preserve. Others are just funky old industrial buildings. We need to have incentives for property owners to reuse and revitalize these aging buildings using green building techniques and better energy awareness, and that whole effort is taking place right now. But we need, people have to have incentives to revitalize their property and to implement our green building ideas. And also, just the whole real estate phenomenon is an economic engine in the city, from everyone who's involved in the development review process, to the construction industry, to real estate and the banking and all the related stuff. That's an important part of our economy today, much more so than it was in 1990. So anyway, these are big questions. It's going to be difficult. It's a really big deal. We're right at the very beginning. Today is a great opportunity for our boards and commissioners to get a chance to talk. And again, it's only the beginning. We're going to be bringing in the public and doing all this over the next year or two. Did you want to talk again, Betty, about? Okay. So we're asking you to sort of self-select at the four different tables, probably two board members and council members at each table from each group. And the rest of us can observe, and we'll meet back at whatever the timer is, 10:30.
We'll hear report outs from each of the four groups. And this meeting is being taped for replay. So in order for those that weren't able to attend or want to learn what we've been discussing, it would be really great if everyone would sit down, so the recording could be of value to people. So we have four groups, and Councilmember Barnwell is going to review the highlights of his group discussion. And I'm going to keep an eye on my watch. Each report out can be approximately 10 minutes, so that's a good amount of time. And then we'll go into the public comment. Ryan?
Well, we had no shy violets in our group at all. And I think for everyone, as I mentioned to somebody just a little bit earlier, this is mother's milk to everybody that was at the table that I sat at. So nobody had to be brought up to speed on the issues, and they all were very well-versed in how to talk about this stuff. We didn't come up with the ultimate answer, but we came up with some suggestions. And I'll try to go quick enough, so that when I'm done, any members can also add what they think I forgot. One of the big things for us, that we feel that specific findings coming from our guidelines need to be clear, and there have to be reasons associated with why the ABR or the HLC came to a conclusion about why they approved a building. We recognize that administratively, it's difficult for the ABR and the HLC to do this because there are time constraints per project. So we thought that maybe a list of guidelines, a checklist of guidelines that they could use to go through, to make sure that they looked at, for example, the Urban Design Guidelines book, which we all felt was an excellent tool to get us to where we wanted in the design and size of the buildings. The checklist, I'm kind of... One of the big things for us that we feel that specific findings coming from our guidelines need to be clear, and there have to be reasons associated with why the ABR or the HLC came to a conclusion about why they approved a building. We recognize that administratively, it's difficult for the ABR and the HLC to do this because there are time constraints per project. So we thought that maybe a list of guidelines, a checklist of guidelines that they could use to go through to make sure that they looked at, for example, the Urban Design Guidelines book, which we all felt was an excellent tool to get us to where we wanted in the design and size of the buildings. The checklist, I'm kind of, the social and economic diversity was an important component of what we felt needed to be maintained. We all recognize the constraints, but the diversity is of three categories. It's a diversity of housing type, it's a diversity of occupants, and it's also a geographical diversity of placing things throughout the town, maybe not necessarily all downtown. The key relationship between density and traffic, and the traffic is more than just traffic, it's just cars, and what do you do with cars? And does the parking of cars begin to negatively impact the size of the buildings or the ability to use the buildings? We wanted to reaffirm that at least downtown, the automobile is a choice, not a necessity. And we thought we'd offer up the idea that maybe in given projects downtown, the parking stall is its own condominium unit purchased separately if you want it. So you could buy a downtown condominium unit and not purchase any parking at all, or purchase one parking stall if you chose, to try and begin to remove the parking component out of the building design. And which comes first, the chicken or the egg? How do you get the people downtown? Will you do that if you have good transit? Well, how do you get the good transit to get the people downtown? So we recognize it's difficult to know where to start. This was something I am particularly focused on, and that is the quality of life issue. I think in my own mind, all of this discussion is a quality of life issue. It's a cultural, historical, social discussion, out of which then comes our architectural solutions to it. More residencies downtown? We talked about how to get to affordable housing units, recognizing that we're just not there, even with size. A twelve-hundred-square-foot market unit downtown is still going to be eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's not targeting the workforce people who we feel it's important to target. So we talked about housing in the M-one zone because the M-one land is cheaper now. It has no housing component. Is there a way to put housing down there through employer-employee housing projects? And we felt that employer-employee housing projects were, might be the wave of the future in actually targeting the people who we want to live in this town rather than be on the highway, seventeen thousand going south every day and ten thousand going north. Granny units, we feel that granny units needs to be looked at again. The reason that granny units fell off the table several years ago was parking. The neighborhoods of San Mercán and San Roque fought against it because they felt adding additional units in the back without adding parking would clog up the streets. Is that still the feeling? Is there a way to talk about affordability in rentals? Granny units may be one of the few ways we get to affordable rental units. However, we recognize that granny units don't allow for family expansion. The minute your family starts getting bigger, that's only a certain category of rental. It's not solving the problem with families. Separate parking from units, I mentioned. Are there other places in the city besides downtown that could benefit from some of the special considerations that we give to housing downtown having to do with parking? Maximum parking requirements? The variable density issue, where right now, the variable density is based upon the bedroom count rather than the size. We feel as though we should look at the variable density issue and base it on a square-footage size rather than on a bedroom count, because right now, if a parcel allows five units of three bedrooms, those three bedrooms can be three thousand square feet, and thus the building becomes very fat and big. Should that be allowed? And we want to have that discussion. The effect of low versus high density on sustainability. What is sustainable? Is sustainable just green? As Ms. Jacobs mentioned, she felt that in the downtown core, there is a cultural, historical component that's important to the character of Santa Barbara and expressed some concern that that cultural, historical component could be trumped by a green sustainability concept that would allow large buildings down there, where indeed she felt that maybe they were probably not appropriate, which another one that I share. So I think I finished before time. Is there anyone on the committee who would like to add? Yes, Suzette?
I want to say that I thought there was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought we had a very strong commitment to saying that the definition of the ideal community that we want ten years from now has to be defined in this general plan, in this general plan process. So saying what the characteristics of that community are and then getting to these implementation techniques. So one of the things, some of the things we defined were that we wanted the community to be diverse racially, economically, so on across the line, and that some of the other things that you talked about, that parking is a preference, is a choice, not a necessity, that really it's defining where we want to be ten years from now and then figuring out how we're going to get there. But everybody has to agree on what that definition is.
Yeah, that goes back to this being a cultural, social issue rather than specifically architectural. Anyone else? Sorry.
Thanks. Thank you very much. No, you're perfect. Our next group is going to be represented by Alex Pujol.
Hello. Are we on track, headed in the right direction, Santa Barbara? We thought it was a loaded question, especially there were two components. One is in terms of size, bulk, and scale and height, and the other is the social-economic component. And in that sense, we felt, some of us felt strongly that the gentrification issue was not something we were heading in the right direction. And as such, as defined, that the cross-section of the population is not well, not represented, but housing for the cross-section of the population is not provided. Then we talked about, okay, several issues related to this question in terms of size, bulk, and scale. We talked about that some of the buildings are not successfully breaking up the mass with the attempt that is made. We talked about the statement of, a notion that has transpired, that in the twenties, our town was supposed to be a one- and two-story building town. And we talked about how historically, there are drawings and documents that attest that the inspiration and the goals for the city was to be a larger city, as shown in the buildings that, for instance, are around the Get Heart Room on Six Thirty Garland Street. But the landmark buildings are low-profile, and we talked about the impacts of having larger buildings next to important buildings like the post office, the city hall, the courthouse, et cetera. Okay, we talked about some other issues, and among them, the issue of density, which is central to a city. And my position is that the city's density is the main city resource that cannot be squandered and have been taken very, very seriously. And if a city doesn't have density, there is not a city, it is a suburb, and this is our historical resource. But also, of course, as a counter side, people want to increase their, maximize their potential as in Aspen or Pasadena. We talked about the existing policies, the guidelines, and the findings that need to be made. Our group was perhaps more loaded with designers, members of HLC and ABR, and we have less members from the Planning Commission, Council. And we found that a lot of these findings do not exactly work for us at the time that they're made and the way they are becoming to the process. But on the other side, most of the larger projects have already gone through the Planning Commission where the findings are atropius. Well, I'm going to go back to the summary sheet because we talked about the basic questions that we're facing today as far as where we're on track in terms of size, bulk, and scale. And our group unanimously felt that, yes, we are on track on that, except that we see a significant loss of landscape that needs to be provided. We were also unanimous on that, either in terms of setbacks, and we know that in some places, front street setbacks are not appropriate, but we noticed, we agree that the city is losing some of these larger trees and its landscape components, and we regret that. Do we have existing policies and findings? Yes, we do. We unanimously agree on that. But there is a lot of missing awareness of what those tools are and when and how they should be used. And I think one of what we consider a larger Plan Santa Barbara issue, some of them are the incentive to use units, to make units smaller, and to change zoning. The zoning, we see zoning, or at least many of us see zoning, the nineteen fifty-seven zoning ordinance, as inappropriate for a city like Santa Barbara. We talked about how everything that we like in Santa Barbara is legal, non-conforming, maybe not even legal, but non-conforming nevertheless, as the courthouse, the buildings in the Riviera, the housing downtown because of a number of stories of parking and so forth and so on. I will open the floor for other members of the group to comment. Anybody would like to add anything? Paul?
I want to add one more comment having to do with the landscaping, and that was canopy trees. When a project has two hundred trees, I'm sorry, two hundred trees, we think of that two hundred palm trees versus two hundred canopy trees has a big difference. The other thing we talked about was a median-down chapala. We understand that there's some fire department concerns having to do with staging and things. But if there was a median-down chapala and there were canopy trees in there, what kind of an impact that would make visually as well as temperature-wise? How much cooler would it be to be on those sidewalks?
I want to just add to those comments that a street tree, as represented by a king pong, king palm or queen palm is just simply inadequate as we move forward, doesn't provide any shade or character. It does very little. So we're really looking at this issue of really adding more significant shade and trees to soften our architecture.
Thank you. Okay, Irma and Bill Lavoie, could you bring the Vadi Sol for this group?
I wanted to let everyone know I've collected speaker slips, and I'll walk around to make sure we have them all for the next part. Thank you.
It seems our group started on details and then switched to big issues. I think we need to answer the question is, what do we want to be when we grow up? And who do we want to live here? We need to really talk about sustainability in a broad sense, and it was mentioned, live within our resources. What are those resources? You know, light and air and sky are resources, not just trees and gasoline, and a prudent use of those and focused use of those resources in a more comprehensive, definitely, list of what those resources are. We need to take a close look at what the impacts of the previous policy are, and most of our group felt that they are not working, and that those require fundamental changes in policy. Failure of the zero setbacks to provide a good living environment, particularly in the C-two zone, that when you put housing in, you have to really think about what it is to live in that building and what it is to have your neighboring building at forty-five to sixty feet tall, three feet away from your backyard. We need to identify what we mean by quality of life. We use that word a lot, but what does that really mean? And that goes back to that list of resources. Why do we live here? Why do we want to continue to live here? We need to identify what it means to the character of a small town, which we all seem to think we live in. Maybe we passed that point, but one of the characteristics of urban living or living in this particular town, city, what's it look like? We all want to be able to live here, and so if there is housing, it needs to be provided for all levels of the economic base, not just luxury condominiums. It would be very helpful for the commissioners to have findings that form an informed development, both as a, you know, as someone who works for developers and someone who gets to wrangle with developers. The findings identify community priorities, and it goes back to speaking about living within our resources. We only have so much to work with. What are we going to do with it? And then how do we accomplish this? I think rereading the Urban Design Guidelines for myself was enlightening. I think it should be required reading before each meeting of the Planning Commission, Landmarks Commission, and ABR. We need to start enforcing it, and the way to do that is, I think, to have findings and bullet point findings that clearly identify what is meant by compatibility with adjoining, you know, what does it mean to have these buildings fit in? And part of the discussion that spurred this discussion, four-story buildings, maybe that isn't the real discussion, but rather compatibility with adjoining development is the real discussion we ought to be having. So what can we do now? I think we need to learn from our experience. We have to be honest with ourselves when we've made mistakes, and I'd have to say that Landmarks Commission has made a few mistakes. Actually, one of Alex's bullet points is, we can't pretend to make a village out of a big building. It just doesn't work aesthetically. We have to assume that building, big buildings, have to look like big buildings, not like villages on top of pools, and that's a problem. And the other, actually, the easy thing to do in the gallery, to make the Get Heart Room into a gallery of the successes, have examples of the buildings that have been successful. We give buildings, we give awards out every few years. We should have those buildings up to say, this was a successful building. It'd probably be good to have, this was not, that would be weird. So, and then is there anything else from my group that I did not include? Go ahead.
I think also to echo what the other group said, the question of what's missing when we're talking about housing, the questions so far have been, how many units and where did they go? And we were talking about, but for whom? And we need to focus on when we make decisions, who are we talking about? And that might drive some of the policies around the type of building that we approve or don't approve.
Just the concept of when you're talking about Charter Section 5007 and living within our resources, and now it's new terminology, sustainability, which is a little bit broader, but it's essentially repackaging the same concept. The issue of human scale is, I think, what we are, one of the things that we're fundamentally grappling with, and it comes out in the discussions of heights and bulks and densities and so forth. And so what is human scale and where? And how do we continue to keep that human scale, which really defines a lot of the character of this neck of the woods? And that's where we get into the heights, you know, is sixty feet with no setbacks and so forth, in keeping what we define as our comfort level of human scale? And I think that's one of the pervading issues that I know we talked a lot about.
The other, one point I'd like to make is that variable density was a gift from the city. It is not a fundamental right. So we can say what goes into that variable density, and we need to. I think it's time.
Great. Thank you, Bill. We'll go to the next group. I like Bill's self-description of sometimes he wrangles with developers and he does it mildly. Hi, May and Bruce. And then we're going to get to public comment after this final report out.
Well, we had certainly interesting debate at our table. I think, first of all, we were trying to figure out, are we a town or are we a city? And I guess it depends on what time of the day you look at it, but since we had City Councilman at the table, we figured out we are a city and we need to really act like one. And then we asked ourselves, are we really on the right track? And we determined that we are, we're just going the wrong direction. And it's, you know, it's not by mistake. I mean, I think, you know, the wishes that we all granted, you know... I mean, I think, you know, the wishes that we all granted, you know, a few decades ago have all come true, and we realize that we get what we wish for. So what are we going to, are we learned from that? And what are we going to try and change? So I think we've all come to the understanding that we have so many rules and guidelines and ordinances now. We walk around with binders to go to our meetings. And it's not a matter of a lack of rules. I think what we need to realize is, we've essentially all been given badges, but we need to not be afraid to use our guns. And so I think we have the ammo if we're willing to use it. And I think the city needs to really step up and appoint the appropriate people that will exercise the discretion that has made this town such a great place. This town is not wonderful because of rules. It's wonderful because of inspiration and free-thinking people that have created all the beautiful visuals that you see in the Get Hart Room gallery that are full of variety. And it's not about sameness, hard and fast rules that give us, you know, continuous building heights, continuous setbacks, continuous anything. It's the variety that makes this town the place it is. So we need to believe in our leaders. We need to support those that allow us to use discretion. And I think we need to rethink the rules that we have in place because we've let ourselves into this predicament. So if we realize that, I think we can start correcting things. So first of all, I think that, you know, Santa Barbara is the land of free parking and expensive housing. So how do we change those priorities? Well, I think we need to decouple the equation that links housing and parking together. I think we need to create mechanisms where we can actually utilize all the parking that we have downtown for residential, not just commercial uses. Right now, we have vacant parking garages at night, and yet every mixed-use project needs to provide two parking spaces for each unit, even though they're next door to each other. So I think we have redundant parking. We're not sharing it. We need to rethink our priorities. I think you don't need two cars for every unit. I think you need a variety of residential opportunities in town. Not everybody needs a car. Some people only need one, others need two. But we need to supply housing for all needs, not just the set formula of two cars per unit. I think variable density has really led us astray. It was well-intended, and I think variable density is probably more about, we're real dense during the day when everybody's here, but at night, we're not very dense because they all left to another city. We've been exporting our problems, and I think we really need to start thinking regionally. We've really impacted and created growth in adjacent communities, and they're struggling with trying to make up for our shortfall. So I think we need to be sustainable and deal with our own problems and not export them to our neighbors. So with that being said, I think we need to rethink our unit sizing in the housing element, how we link parking to the units, where we put units. I think we need to rethink the boundaries of the Central Business District and the benefits that we've associated with that district to more closely follow how the town has grown, especially along transit corridors. We also need to rethink the boundaries of El Pueblo Viejo. There's a real rub right now because Central Business District and El Pueblo Viejo are very similar in boundaries. And we're trying to protect our historic core, and yet we need housing downtown to prevent the commuting and traffic and congestion and all the other things that we don't like about commuting. So if we can rethink these districts so that they can embrace each other and not be in direct competition, I think we will be better off. We have other opportunities in the other outlined zones, the M1 Zone, for example. We need to figure out ways to get housing integrated there. I think as we rethink the rules, we really need to just be careful what we're asking for. I think we need to lead by example. We need to have bigger carrots and offer incentives and have the discretion to reward good behavior rather than always thinking up more restrictions and rules to tell people what they can't do. I think if we can reward that good behavior, you might be surprised what we will get. I think we do need to live within our means. I think sustainability and the use of the ground plane in projects is really important. It needs to be a place for people. We need to incentivize putting parking and other uses underground, letting setbacks undulate when there's trade-offs for public benefit. You need to create places for people that are actually on the ground. And in exchange for that, yes, you might have four-story in a portion of a project if you're gaining a useful plaza. But to go four stories by having surface parking, I don't think that we can make the findings to do that anymore. It's just not sustainable. So I think it's frustrating to be where we're at, but I think we have the opportunity to learn from our mistakes, and maybe that's why we're so smart. We've made a lot of them. So anyway, let's all take the opportunity, kind of reprioritize our wishes and get them in sync. And I think there's probably others on the committee that may have other ideas that could be added into this. But I think there's a way out, and we just need to remain creative to get there.
Thank you. Okay, that was the summary of the four groups, and we'll all want to be thinking and responding to this in a number of ways. And the first people we're going to call on to add their comments and responses is, we have about 20 speaker slips, and we have about 40 minutes. So we're going to be shooting for about two minutes apiece. And I'll read people's names, and Paul Casey will bring the mic first to Naomi Kovacs, and then to Patricia Hiles. And so you don't need to get a, Paul will bring it to you. If you could please stand up. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Naomi Kovacs. I'm the Executive Director of the Citizens Planning Association, and I'm speaking today on behalf of our South Coast Land Use Committee. To start, I actually would like to express our hope that today's workshop is not only made available to the public, as we've been informed by purchase on DVD or video, but we hope that it will be broadcast on City TV for the greater community that wasn't able to be here with us today. Also in that vein, I'd like to request that all of the flip charts that were made for all of the breakout groups, which have really great, interesting information on it, that those be transcribed and made available for the public as well. With regard to the question today of size, vault, scale, and height of buildings, it's certainly an important topic for our community, and it's one that's interlinked with a number of our community values and challenges facing us today, such as traffic and need for housing. To balance all of this, we can't forget, however, the importance of the historic center or the inner core of the El Pueblo Viejo. There should be even tighter restrictions for this area, which isn't to say that the restrictions should be looser elsewhere, but they should just be tighter in the core of Our city is really lucky to have a strongly involved local community that holds strong community values and has residents who are very active in promoting and protecting its unique character. The vision themes and action steps outlined in the Downtown Waterfront Vision Project Report, which one of the members of the community provided to people today, is a strong statement for retaining and enforcing height limits. With that in mind, we'd be interested to hear comments from decision-makers regarding the proliferation of large 40-foot and 60-foot buildings in that area. While there is so much to say today about the topic at hand, there's simply not enough time to do so. So for now, we'll stop with this. The small groups today were asked two questions, of the questions, two of them were, do we need more teeth? And are we headed in the right direction? To respond to these questions, we need to ask and answer two other questions. If we have the safeguards now, if effective and enforceable tools are already on paper, why aren't they working? And how can we make them work or improve upon them to do so? Thank you.
Patricia Hiles, and then Paul Hernadi.
I think most of us generally agree what we would like to have our city look like, more like it used to be or really still pretty good. But I think the problem is, we have these workshops, we set out what we want, and then developers come along and they get modifications and more modifications. There was one given last week, two residential units downtown, no parking whatsoever for each of the units. That's a modification. And I think that whatever we agree in this current round of 2030 planning, that the staff and the planning council and everyone else to definitely enforce what the rules are. And as to limit height limits, which I thought this is going to be more about today, I would suggest instead of having a cutoff limit, say 40 feet or whatever, have a form-based or FAR-type thing, that you can have so many cubic feet of development on a lot of certain sides. Then we'll get much more variety. Someone might want a tall, skinny building, someone might want a flat, fat one. But we will get more interesting buildings, and we certainly have good architects that can come up with those things.
Paul Hernadi followed by Keith Rivera. So Keith, if you'd just raise your hand for Paul. Okay.
I was very pleased to hear that one of the small groups reported out that air is a resource, because I would like to briefly address the question of air quality. The first thing is that it just seems very obvious that air pollution, which is generated by traffic, cannot dissipate so easily or at all if the buildings are large and tall and they don't include general setbacks, especially landscape setbacks, because we know about the vegetation's impact on air quality. Now, what happens is, I think we tend to be a little too complacent about air quality in the city of Santa Barbara, because we rely on occasional reports about how Santa Barbara County attains certain standards. First of all, not all of the standards, particularly not the state standards, which are heavier than the federal, have really been attained. Second of all, the network of monitoring devices the county has, 16 of them in the entire county, are specifically and purposefully set in places which measure average and not in the highest traffic areas. Now, what happens is, of course, that the average air pollution in the county is probably quite tolerable. But those of us who live in Santa Barbara City, particularly if we happen to live downtown or live along traffic corridors, don't breathe in average air pollution. We breathe in the actual air pollution that's there. And that's there, and it's getting worse and worse, and tall and big buildings without adequate setbacks would add to it. One last thing. It's very interesting, I spent first day doing some research on the web, that recent research, the last three or four years, seems to contradict the notion that we can easily pile up a lot of density along traffic corridors because, and I have the bibliography submitted to the City Council and also to the UPlants Santa Barbara website, and anybody who catches me after the meeting, I would be happy to give them a copy. There is a lot of scientific study now that shows that the impact of traffic-generated air pollution, especially on children, is very, very considerable in terms of asthma and other diseases. So if we assume that this trend in the research community will continue, and they explore both in the United States and abroad, how air pollution affects children and other sensitive receptors, we will probably discover a little too late that it might have been better to be very careful about how we place residential development. And if we definitely feel we must place them downtown and along traffic corridors, at least make double sure that there are adequate landscape setbacks and also additional oval spaces, even if it means that some fewer market rate units will have to be allowed. While we would definitely want to see any building that gets approved go towards the workforce. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keith Rivera will be followed by Joe Androlitis.
I just want to thank the city and staff for having the opportunity to listen in on today's discussions. I want to reiterate that the compact development in our downtown core and along our transportation corridors are our best hope to improve our transportation, housing, and sustainability needs. Regarding housing, I'd like to concur with the idea that an important way to address the appropriateness of the housing we're creating is to revamp our current variable density formulas and our archaic parking requirements and not arbitrary height limits. And finally, I just want to make kind of a general plea regarding our planning and development process, that we need more proactive and less reactive, and not blindly allow existing conditions to dictate what we do in the future. We need to not only respond to what's here now, but we need to envision what we should have in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Joe Androlitis, then Greg Rich.
Thanks for letting me speak. I just wanted to respond to a question here. Are we on track and in the right direction for Santa Barbara? I believe we're not. We're an auto-oriented community, and I think until we change that, we're not going to be sustainable. As far as the existing policy, guidelines, and findings, I'd like to change those. I think the U.S. Green Building Council is a great resource. They're the kind of the authority on green building design and development. And I ask that staff look at their LEED for neighborhood development. And I'll just list a couple of their criteria. Compact development is a prerequisite that requires at least seven units per acre, and if commercials in the project, at least an FAR of .5. Other criteria is diversity of uses, diversity of housing types, affordable-for-sale housing, reduced parking footprint, and locating the buildings near transit corridors. Those are some of the criterias of development, and we want to encourage those, especially our applicants, to have LEED certified buildings. As far as what's missing, I think youth is missing. There's not enough young people involved in the process. Someone 20 years old today is going to be 50 when this general plan update gets, you know, updated again. And I think we need to involve the young people in our community. I know, I'm probably one of the younger people in the room, and I live in San Roque, and, you know, I know some people say that in those neighborhoods, you have to drive. I don't want to drive. I don't want to drive to the supermarket or to the laundry or all those places. I want to walk, and I can't. And that's one of the things I want to see changed. Key questions for Santa Barbara, more workshops, more public outreach. And then a couple of findings that I'd like to mention for development projects. I think parking should be minimized and placed underground where possible. Establish minimum density requirements, not maximum. Change, a lot of people spoke to this, change the variable density formula to allow more units that are smaller. I think we need to establish variable volumes and variable setback formulas for our buildings downtown. And I think we need to find an urban growth boundary for the city of Santa Barbara. Thanks.
Greg, and then followed by Kathy McCammon.
Hi there. My name is Greg Rec. And as far as the question about headed in the right direction, as far as the residential component is concerned, I think that we are headed in the right direction because I think housing downtown is good. It gets it into an area where we have transportation available. I think that creating more life downtown for longer periods of time is better, instead of just eight to five and on weekends, actually having something around the dinner hour and beyond would be good downtown, and I think housing provides for that. Some of the comments that I heard in the table that I was listening in on was that the guidelines are not working. And I suggest that it is probably the process that's really not working. We really need to read, understand, and enforce, if that's the right word, the guidelines that we have. They really do provide for flexibility and diversity, which has made the city so great. And so I think that the guidelines need to be understood, and I don't think that we need to go into changing those into codes and things like that. We need that flexibility. As far as what we create in our downtown core, please keep in mind that urban living will appeal to some people, but let's not come up with these rules so that it appeals to everyone. Some people like the suburban model. We've definitely heard that. Let's not continue to apply a bunch of suburban rules onto our downtown area. Setbacks are great on the street. I definitely promote those. I definitely promote the variable volume ideas along the street. But let's not have setbacks property line to property line where they're not appropriate. We're just going to end up with these narrow little canyons that really aren't serving anyone. And then last, we need to have incentives to build the type of housing that we do need. I think we all recognize that what has been created in the recent past is not really what we're after. And we do need to look at the type of parking that we have, the amount of parking that we have. amount of parking that we have, and looking at opportunities for shared parking. Thanks.
Okay. Kathy McCammon, and then Connie Hannah, and they're sitting right near each other, so...
Well, I guess, um, the group I was in definitely shows that there is a lot of diversity on these different issues, because we talked about the idea that urban village was an oxymoron, that we needed wider streets or wider setbacks or wider sidewalks, that when we're doing the general plan updates, we need to see pictures of what future scenarios would look like, so people wouldn't have the same shock that they now have looking at, um, Chappala. Because some people have, um, certainly mentioned that, you know, shocking, how did that get approved, et cetera, and people need to see what the zoning allows now and see what it really looks like. Um, another thing we talked about, and certainly one of the League of Women Voters' suggestions, is that we have to get realistic about cars. If you, even if people don't use them, they need to go somewhere, because people have them. And I think one of the earlier comments that was made about the downtown parking garages, maybe those could be made available for the resi- residential units that don't have parking, and then they wouldn't have the six o'clock shuffle and take all the street parking. The other thing is, everybody seems to agree on the need for increased affordable housing, but the feeling is that we're not quite there on how, we're not quite sure on how to get there. We need to look at our findings, our ordinances, and see if there is a way we can talk about or judge who will live there as an important quality when we're, projects are reviewed. On quality of life, some of these items need better definition, and there's a, a lot of ambiguity in some of the findings, and maybe those could be worked on to be a little clearer. And I guess everybody needs to reread the urban design guidelines, because I know, I had started looking at them last night, and I thought, oh, a lot of the things we talk about not having are there, and maybe some of these could be incorporated better into the findings.
Thank you. Connie Hannah, followed by Steve Yates.
I'm Connie Hannah, and I'm speaking for the Sustainability Study Group of the League of Women Voters. Uh, one of the architects in the group I was listening to put it very succinctly. She said the problem is that every property owner and every developer wants to maximize everything they can get out of their property, and that the community is very concerned about maintaining quality of life and smaller scale. I think this puts the problem exactly where it has to be, and for that reason, we expect to support the indication from every group that you need a firm checklist of things you've considered before a project is approved, and major findings that need to be made for every project. As a result, we will also continue to ask for adequate setbacks, open space, and no modifications on projects, because we already have good existing regulations. We think that the size, bulk, and scale, which was the issue today, remains the issue, and how to control height and how to control bulk, when we have these two opposing interests coming to us, I think will be the question from now on.
Steve Yates, followed by Chris Hansen.
Thanks, Paul. Good morning. First of all, I'd like to just applaud the city, Paul, your staff, and the city council for suggesting this. This is the first time in twelve years that I've seen all the boards and commissions and council members together in one room talking about these great things, and, and I listened to each of the conversations and thought that it was extremely valuable, and I hope that this is not a one-time thing, that something continues. If one was active listening to those groups, one could easily conclude that reasonable minds don't always need to reach consensus. Someone said earlier that we perhaps all understand what needs to be done. Well, in listening to the groups, I can see even within this group, that we all have many, many different views about what our policy means, let alone how to implement. And those views are informed by our individual values. This is important for one reason. Liz mentioned before that the general plan outreach has occurred, and it's, and we've had four open workshops, and interestingly, they were geographically dispersed through this town. One on the west side, one at Fortuna Gallery, one at the Hope Branch School, all of which I attended, but I missed the west side one. The most remarkable thing to me about that is you could have been in four completely separate and, and, and distinct communities, if you really listened to the values of the groups. And as we can disagree in a group like this, we have to be responsible for incorporating all of those different groups in our community into what our policies mean at a formation level before we can successfully implement them. Very, very important. On an implementation level, you know, I heard people talking as if, some epiphany about the urban design guidelines today, um, and I think it's important to, to understand how important a framework document like that is every day on your desk or actually in, in, interact with the development process. Extremely important. For example, there's a lot of conversation about changing our height limits, because we're concerned about some of the larger projects in town. I would suggest to you, if you took EPV guidelines and, and looked at Paseo and, and Plaza requirements in the guidelines, you could make the findings that would preclude any ground-level podium parking at all on that site, within your existing guidelines. If you took that podium-level parking out of the project at Gray, you'd significantly reduce the mass and scale of the project without materially changing the economics. So we have an opportunity to look at our existing tools, use them really well, and to move forward until we get to that general plan process and have a discussion about our real values as a community. Thank you.
Chris Hansen, followed by Mark Chaconis.
Yeah, good morning. My name's Chris Hansen with the Colsta Housing Coalition. I want to thank staff again for having this forum. I think, obviously, a lot of different, um, opinions about where we should go in the future, but I heard a great question that was asked today by actually, I think it was Councilmember House, and it kind of encapsulated this whole thing for me, because I guess I don't understand why so many people have such a strong reaction to, uh, building height, when he asked the question, when's the last time a building of sixty feet was, was approved in Santa Barbara? And that's what our existing findings we have now. Building height, and more specifically, reducing building height and getting away from designing flexibility, uh, we start losing out on those items that we would call community benefits, multi-generational families, affordable workforce housing. So we ask, I mean, we've trusted our boards and commissions, they've done a fantastic job with the findings they have now. So I think we're on the right track. This is not get away from flexibility and design, um, having the choice of multi-generational families in the future.
Thank you. Mark Chaconis, and then Connie Galt.
Hello, my name's Mark Chaconis, I'm representing the Downtown Organization. I want to thank, uh, the city council for, uh, the direction to pull everybody together, and, and staff who really are bringing everybody together. I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for everybody to get on the same page, if, if not only using the same playbook. Um, particularly interested in the next steps, how this information comes together, and then how we move forward, once we pull together all the details and all the discussion points. Um, I think utilizing the Plan Santa Barbara is a great mechanism, although it's a two-year process, so it's going to take a very long time to pull this whole thing together. But that's our primary interest at this point, is continuing the communication and discussion, and I want to thank everybody for taking the time today.
Connie Galt, followed by Callum DeForest.
Good morning. I didn't initially plan to speak this morning, but I listened to snippets of each of the groups, and as I got to the last group, they were having a discussion on, does anybody really care about height? And they hadn't really heard from too many community members about whether people cared or not. Well, I care, and a number of people that I have talked to and been in groups with care as well, so just put me down as someone who cares. Also, um, in terms of the Chappala buildings, I, I think that density and size are also issues, and, um, those two buildings really loom over the street, and, um, I, I just think they're too big. I'm a refugee from Orange County, and so I can speak from experience as to what happens with overdevelopment and overgrowth. It was once a really beautiful area and very livable, but it's no longer. So I would suggest that, in answer to the question, uh, what do we want to be when we grow up, not Orange County. Thank you.
Callum DeForest, that's right here, and then Mickey Flax.
Good morning. Thank you very much for this meeting. It's very valuable.
I'm Tyler Boyd.
What?
Do my mouth...
Excuse me. Got it now? Uh, thank you very much for this meeting, and I, what has not been mentioned, when we, and I'm not speaking for the Proche Society, but I've heard very little about the preservation of historic structures in sites. Maybe we're doing a good job of that, but I don't think so when we can allow a fourth-story building, uh, one block from the historic courthouse, that will impinge on its uniqueness. Also, I am concerned about the process projects go through to gain permit approval. Sometimes the planning commission gets a project first, and then the, the applicant will say, when questioned about the project by another board or commission, that the planning commission allowed us to do this or that. Then the reverse occurs. The, it'll, the project will go through the ARB or the HLC, and then to the planning commission, and the planning commission will be told, oh, you, you can't change that, the, uh, ARB or HLC allowed us to do it. So I think that needs to be spelled out a little stronger. I'm very confused about that process. Then to the overall question of quality of life, that seems to be a conflict. I don't think we can maintain the quality of life here in Santa Barbara and house everyone, all the workers, everybody that wants to come here. That's impossible. We won't have any quality of life. So I want to emphasize that we do need to think broader and, and really think that we do need our commuters, and I know, uh, Roger Horton is pushing for rail commuters, and I think that's important, because everyone can't live in Santa Barbara, there isn't room, and it won't be sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Flax, followed by Jerry Beenan.
Uh, thank you. I must admit that I'm responding more to the small group discussion that I observed rather than to those questions. The issue of quality of life has come up a lot, and, uh, I think quality of life goes beyond the mountains and the air and the seashore and, uh, uh, nice feeling that you get in town. It also depends on people who work here. And in fact, those people are missing from today's sessions, not anybody's fault, but anybody who works for a living is not self-employed or not retired cannot be here on a Wednesday morning. Some of those people were at the GPU sessions that I attended, all four of them, uh, and they had somewhat different concerns that are expressed than have been expressed here. Uh, building heights were mentioned, but it was not a primary concern for most people. Diversity and affordable housing seem to be a primary concern for most people. And in that vein, we've talked about how housing, low-income housing is subsidized. Well, I will submit that all housing is subsidized by the municipality. Uh, housing is subsidized in terms of the infrastructure that's created by the municipality. Housing is subsidized by the tremendous growth in value that it has had because of the nature of the municipality. All housing is subsidized, and we should remember that. Low-income housing requires a direct subsidy. Middle-income workforce housing probably requires employer subsidy. But we also need to create funds that provide all of these subsidies. In addition to the funds, we use taxation and sales tax to provide the funds we need for the infrastructure by and large. We need funds to provide for the housing that we need, whether they're in the form of development impact fees increases, or transfer fee increases, whatever form we can work out needs to be established. We need the funds to create not just infrastructure, but to create the housing for the people who are going elsewhere, not by choice, but because we are exporting, as somebody said, we are exporting our housing problems to other communities. In that vein, any modifications, whether it's increased density or increased height or whatever it is, should only be allowed if they are tied to affordability. I think that should be a principle that everybody, uh, uh, works with. The second issue that was discussed in great length at our session is that parking is now driving housing. That is, if you pardon the expression, back asswards. Uh, parking should not determine how housing is built and how much it costs and who can live there. Uh, we are a community that is geographically suitable for more walking, more biking, more transit, and we have to develop those ideas and relegate the automobile to a secondary consideration. Thank you.
Jerry Beenan, and Mark Bradley.
Jerry Beenan, I'm the government of First Director for the Home Builders Association. I think I'm the only builder to speak. I, I was in the same group Mickey was in, and I heard a lot of interesting things. One of the ones I heard is that you're an island and you're living within your resources. You are not. You are negatively impacting the two-county region from Camarillo to Santa Maria. I heard somebody suggest you do a poll on density, see where the public is. Absolutely the wrong question. Our joke in our industry is the only thing California's hit worst in sprawl is density. The question you want to ask is how willing are you to accept density in your backyard? Opposition rises with density. The hotter the density, the more opposition you're going to have. I heard a lot of discussion about building rental units. It will have absolutely no impact on the 27,000 people who are commuting into your city, because they all want to own a home. You are 27% below the national average for homeownership and 17% below the state average for homeownership. We will tell people that the reason you don't build rental units is it makes no sense. If it makes no sense, it makes no sense. You think you can fund these from getting subsidies? I always encourage people to talk to Rob Pearson. What Rob will tell you is that the pool of money for assistance for rental and affordable units is shrinking, the competition is increasing, and building ten units here does not look very attractive when they can build eighty units in South Dakota. It's becoming harder, not easier. What this discussion lacked that I heard was any kind of a concern about real-world economics. You really need to add that to your policy discussion before you go ahead and approve it. Building smaller, building taller is much more expensive per square foot. You have to factor that in. I heard we want to protect views, open space, landscaping, setbacks, want less traffic, lower building heights, we want to be sustainable, we want to be green, we want to be affordable, and we don't want any more expensive housing to pay for. When you look at me in the future, you should look and think, that guy's the Grinch, because I'm going to tell you, you absolutely cannot have it all.
Mark Bradley, followed by Jeff Ackler.
Uh, my, my name is Mark Bradley, and I'm president of the Coalition for Sustainable Transportation. Uh, if we're talking about sustainability and quality of life, I'd like to look at the bigger picture. We're talking about 2030, and, uh, the city council approved the Light Blue Line Project a couple of weeks ago to, uh, mark out where the water will come to if the Arctic ice melts. And so by that time, if we, if we're thinking about that... And so by that time, if we're thinking about that in our planning, the only thing we might be worried about in our buildings by 2030 is whether or not they float or not. And the Dutch, the Dutch are building buildings that float tethered to steel cables, so when things flood there, they'll still be able to live. I'm not proposing we do that here, but I think we need to keep in mind that a lot of the things that are being proposed, such as building, putting more jobs close to, putting more housing close to jobs on transportation corridors, thinking about how easy it is to walk and bike, those will all help make things more environmentally sustainable. And, you know, rather than the light blue line, maybe a more realistic scenario is that when some of the cities along the Gulf Coast in Florida start going underwater a little bit, that this country will start taking us seriously and start enforcing laws for every city that makes driving not so much of a, that makes it more of a luxury than the norm. So, you know, cities will be required by law to cut down on the number of people driving in their cities. So when that happens, if it happens, I hope it doesn't happen, but if it happens, we want to be in place so that can happen. So we should start, as some people said, we should be proactive and not just caught off guard by that. Thank you.
Jeff Ackler and then Jeff Perment.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Ackler. My mother, Shirley Ackler, was president of the Mason Improvement Association and the Citizens Planning Association. And she was one of the leaders in the fight against Fess Parker in his effort to turn this A E speech into a mini Miami Beach. And the same issue was at stake, height, height of buildings. Any case, I believe that it's imperative that we have a referendum on the November 4th, on the November 7th ballot or the June 08 ballot, restrict the height of buildings in the El Pueblo Viejo district to 40 feet and require a second story and above setbacks to match those of the R3 and R4 zones. Okay, this is going to require an amendment to the Santa Barbara City Charter to keep it from being a project-by-project battle between environmental groups and developers. I believe it is worth the effort. Okay, as somebody pointed out, several people pointed out, of course, you know, many people working folks cannot be here. I believe it is imperative that as many citizens as possible should be able to have their input and this is only going to be possible if we have this referendum on the ballot. And thank this organization very much for arranging this.
Okay, Jeff Perment is the last speaker and then we'll just have about five minutes of wrap-up.
Jeff Perment, I'm president of Perment Development Company. I'm here in support of the current height limitations, but with a caveat that we believe that there should be, to get that kind of height, there should be a fair amount of affordable in these projects and there should be better working on the setbacks. Chapala is one that if I had a little better design, a little better thought process, and we're the builders of Chapala, we probably would have designed it with a little more setback. But the flip side of that is we have over 30% of the project with affordable housing. So there are some, I'll say some offsetting stances when you get into the 45, and I don't believe we're over 45 or 50 feet anyway, so from that standpoint, or maybe a little over 45, we should look at those exceptions and not have a hard and fast rule on a 45-foot height limitation. We should allow for exceptions when you have affordable or you're doing better massing or setbacks or something of that nature. Particularly on that corridor of Chapala, which I think could become a problem if we don't design carefully. So I am still supportive of the program that we have, but also I want to focus in on the affordable and the housing because this really is a critical issue that we get workforce and just affordable housing for our folks here. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I just will make a few concluding remarks. We mentioned that this is really part of the community dialogue in the Plan Santa Barbara. This workshop today is part of Plan Santa Barbara because that's pretty much all we're doing and thinking these days as much as we can. So if you have visited the UPlanSB.org site, you'll see that we've been recording all of the workshops and the discussions that we've been having at a grassroots level. So we'll be doing the same type of thing with this special meeting where we will be documenting what the comments were made. We've also been working with Channel 18 and having video links. So we want to have maximum opportunity for members of the community to hear the discussion that happened here today. Likewise, we encourage all of you, if you didn't attend a workshop or even if you didn't just want to listen to it again, you can go to the website and hear more from the, you know, over 400 people that have been participating so far. So what are the next steps and follow-up? One is again to incorporate this as public information for the UPlan Santa Barbara process. Also, the planning commission and the city council meet every six months and their next special joint meeting is Monday, September 10th. And typically on that agenda are UPlan Santa Barbara issues. So what we'll be bringing to the joint meeting is a summary of this first phase of UPlan Santa Barbara and discussion in a little bit more detail of how we're moving forward into educational forums and round-two workshops. Another next step that we anticipated and I think with the dialogue today, we'll have a sense of how to return also in that timeframe to council, whether or not they want to initiate any more immediate direction, perhaps in the form of resolution on how to incorporate the Urban Design Guidelines, potential unit size or variable density issues, and just help everyone who's wanting to proactively help shape the future of the community. And I think this meeting has certainly been a great opportunity to do that. So with that, I think I'll say thank you unless the mayor or anyone else needs to say goodbye. Okay. Well, thank you all for coming. It's been a great meeting.